I'll call this meeting of the York County Council to order. Councilmember Allison Love to give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. In your name we ask, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the oath of office, I'm going to take a second. I'd like to recognize Dylan Graff, our new Assistant County Attorney, and welcome you to York County. Thank you, sir.
Had to wait on the right one.
You hire slow and fire quick, right? So there you go. And he has certainly done that. So, oath of office with Keith Martins, please come forward for Board of Disabilities and Special Needs.
Under appearances, Chief Falk.
High forward, thank you.
Chief Falk, Newport Fire Department, 3755 Torren Pond Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm here tonight with a presentation about the fireboat. Went before Justice Safety Committee and they brought the council, let us come forward. At this time, I'm going to have firefighter Kale Benson come forward. He's go through, go through the slide presentation and I'll follow up behind him. He's a past training officer with Newport. He's captain at Charlotte Fire Department and he's worked with me with the presentation. So at this time, I'm going to ask him to come up, do the slides.
My name is Kale Benson. I reside at 2664 Stone Trace Drive in Rock Hill. And I want to give you some presentation on the fire rescue boat. And just want to start off with the, with the name on it. It's much more than a fireboat. We're doing more than putting water on a fire. We're providing a service to the citizens on Lake Wiley within Newport Fire District and York County and surrounding state and counties that are on the lake. So whether it's a boat fire, a medical emergency, anything that we call all hazards, we're there to provide that service. And that's what we want to present to you tonight. And does everybody have the packet for the information? Good, good. All right. So first thing we want to start off with talking about a little bit is the boat design. This boat right here, a similar design to what we would like to purchase. One of the things we got to take into consideration is what is the weather, what is the climate of our area? Whether it's the summertime, wintertime, thunderstorms, it doesn't matter. We need to have good climate control for the operators, the firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, whether we have Sheriff's Department on board with us or if we have a patient or patients on board. If it's 20 degrees outside, we don't want them to stay on the outside of the boat. We like to get them on the inside, keep them warm, treat them medically, have a controlled environment that we can take care of them in. So that's where we want to start off with our boat design. So as you can see right here, they have a climate controlled cabin for the operators to stay in. Give you some other local examples we did with our research. Charlotte Fire Department's boat is right there. As you can see, it's very similar enclosed cab. Cornelius, we also visited them, another wonderful boat. They took some great time with us to explain their operations and the need for the enclosed cabins and what extra protection that takes place as far as everybody's safety. We also did some work with our counterparts in Charleston County and doing this research. They all strongly recommend climate control is paramount for operations because if you're out in the boat in the summertime when it's 100 degrees, last thing you want to be is the sun all day on a hot deck. So getting in there, staying hydrated and being prepared to take care of any emergency arises, we need that climate control. Just a few other examples, just so you can see, have a variety of pictures there to pique your interest. Once again, these are the style boats we're looking at without board engines on them. I'm sure we've all been on Lake Wiley any matter of time where a thunderstorm popped up, you're looking for somewhere to go. That's the last place we want to be is in a bad thunderstorm with no shelter, but also once again, that's where a likelihood of our emergencies are going to come in times of inclement weather. So we need to take care of ourselves as well as the people that we may be there to serve. All right. So the first staple, obviously fire, you see in the, in the name of the boat, fire rescue boat. So the fire suppression uses of it is obviously any kind of residences, your multimillion dollar mansions. Fire loss is a big thing when we're talking about our ISO ratings and being able to save property. So all fire services works on life safety, stabilizing the incident and property conservation. That's pretty much every fire service's mission when you're talking about fire services. Got commercial businesses, private docks, boat docks, anything on the water, anything of that nature, we can suppress the fire with using the fireboat. So right here, this is a example for you. This is of a recent home that was put up for sale on the lake. If you can look at this right here, this home is at the address above at 1442 Baron Point, which is in our fire district. That's a 9,000 square foot home. That's pretty much equivalent to a commercial structure. So that's three stories. And to give you an example of what a fireboat can do, it does more than squirt water onto a residence. It's essentially an above groundwater main. It supplies hoses just like a fire truck does. So if we connect that hose to that fireboat and supply the engine company with the endless supply of water from Lake Wiley, I hope we don't suck it dry, but we have an endless supply of water. If you don't have that option, we're going to have to rely on a tanker shuttle. So using this as an example, you're looking at about three quarters of a mile from the closest fire hydrant. Now we're using the National Fire Academy's fire flow problem for this, where you take the length times width and divide it by three to get your fire flow. So let's say this house was completely engulfed in flames. They're calling for 3,304 gallons per minute to extinguish this fire. So a tanker is carrying 3,000 gallons of water. That's all it has. Round trip from filling up the tanker, dumping it, getting turned around, going back to that supply of water, it's going to take you about 14 minutes. So you're doing your math and using our formulas, it's going to require us 15 tankers to provide that 3,304 gallons per minute. How many tankers do we have in York County? Well, about 21-ish, but out of 16 departments, that would deplete our whole county. It's not feasible. Let's say we pull a tanker from Leslie, Bethel, York, Hickory Grove. How long is it going to take from Hickory Grove to that point? So you can see the automatic reason why a fireboat is readily available to provide us that endless supply of water. You got it highlighted right there, just so you can see the size of the house. The key thing we like to point out there too, is if the fireboat was to go from shore and spray water to it, you got about 180 foot distance there, be more than capable of doing that. If you were to pull the hose from the boat down the deck up to the fire engine, you're about 400 feet. So we're going to have our endless water supply, which is paramount in extinguishing any fire. If you don't have water, we can't put it out. So you can see all the other residences around it. Topography is a big issue in accessing a home. You do have a house to the left of it, you can see how long that driveway is. You're going to get one fire truck down the end of that driveway and then you're not going to be able to supply anything else. So always access is the key part for our water. So fireboat pulls up, if we pull the hose to the fireboat, to the fire engine, then we have that endless water supply versus depleting our county of 15 tankers to provide what we need. As you can see right there, it's broken down pretty simply. For 9,000 square foot home, if anybody has any questions or needs to explain that any further, please let me know. So there's your example. That's a five inch hose going from the fireboat, from the dock to a residence, they're supplying that water. So that fireboat, most of them are rated about 2,000 GPM pumps, minimum capacity, talking from Charlotte and Cornelius and Charleston, the boats are rated at that 2,000. Most of them are supplying far in excess of 2,000 gallons per minute. So that one entity right there could provide the needs for our water flow. Once again, another example, you can see the five inch hose coming off the rear of that boat, going up the deck and providing water supply. Another example where you can pull up to a landing and access it that way. But in the needs reaches is an issue if you have a home that is way off from shoreline, yeah, we may not be able to access it with a master stream. And I'm going to show you a picture to give you an example of that. That's what we call a master stream. So using that master stream, yes, we could effectively put it out in that case, also protect exposures, keep them from catching on fire, in addition to also supplying that water supply using the five inch hose. Currently, right now, there's not a fireboat or all emergency services asset to York County. Currently, Sheriff's Department is doing Lake Patrol, dive, you have DNR. And that's all that we currently have on that. We do not have a fire rescue boat. We don't have anybody to provide emergency medical services. Our boat will be staffed with firefighters and EMTs. Currently, we're having solicit using DNR or Sheriff's Office or private homeowners and boat owners to use their boats if we were to have an emergency. And that's a big liability within itself. So someone's boat catches on fire in the middle of Lake Wiley, who's going to put it out? Probably eventually it would burn the hole and sink and take care of itself naturally. But as far as access issues, we're going to discuss that a little bit further. So for our, our rescue side of the boat, obviously we have swimmers. We're doing a big project right now at Ebenezer Park. We have more swimmers in the water, kayakers. We have Goat Island. The sandbar is a big issue. We had an example to our counterparts to the south of us in Lake Murray just recently where a, I think they call them the cigarette boats, big boat hit another boat accident, caused one fatality. But how are we going to access our patients in the water? How are we going to get out there to them? I know I've seen those boats come through at the South Carolina side of the sandbar and it's not a big area, but they come through running very fast. You got 20 or 30 boats lined up and that boat doesn't make its turn hard enough, how many people is he going to take out doing that? Could be bad really quick. So we're going to put personnel in the water to treat them appropriately medically. The paramedics and EMTs at Piedmont Medical Center or all of our other emergency services, whether it be River Hills or Fort Mill, they're not trained in water rescue. They not, they may not be able to swim. So our personnel is going to be able to provide that service to them. We've had examples of emergencies where jet skis have hit retaining walls and we've had to go get the patient out of the water. So knowing how to do that appropriately is going to further the success of survival and a successful recovery if we're doing the right things. So we're talking about mass casualty. I mean, that doesn't look like that big of a boat, but there could be 100 people on that boat. And if there's an issue, we all know, hopefully, we've had the pleasure of hearing the spill on ships, fire is the biggest enemy of a ship. So if that was on fire, you have 100 people overboard, how are we going to take care of those people? We need the assets to go out there and rescue these people. Hazardous materials, just the same thing as anything goes. These boats, the big boats, whether it's a sailboat, they have all gas, diesel, sewage, whether it's black or gray water, whatever else may be on that boat. We need to be able to go out there and contain the hazard that's in the water, whether that's deploying buoys or extinguishing the fire like we discussed earlier. So we want to be proactive on that side of it. In the, in the cases of outside of Newport, we talked about, we have Buster Boy Bridge. We have Lake Wiley Dam, the Rock Hill Water Intake, all these multiple businesses. Seaplanes, hopefully you've seen them flying around Rock Hill, but I know there's at least two seaplanes that frequent Lake Wiley, believe one or, one or if not, two of them are based on Lake Wiley. And then as we are seeing it every day, the flight paths over Rock Hill and Charlotte Douglas Airport are directly over Lake Wiley. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Multiple events on the lake, whether that's the polar plunge, triathlons, bass finishing tournaments. Lake Wiley is a year round lake. So that's why I say we have to take that into consideration in boat design and climate There's another example. In our fire district, this particular truck went down the ramp. The trailer got stuck on the ramp, so they actually had to dive to go lift that trailer up to get it off the ramp. Luckily, there were no major injuries with this. But these things do frequent, these do happen, so we need to take that into consideration. So you look at this picture and you say, that's in New York. I can tell you from my experience, I have my pilot's license and they teach you to look for the place that's going to cause the least amount of harm to the people on the ground and the people in the plane. Rock Hill's very densely populated, Fort Mill, everything around the, around the lake was the flattest spot and most straight avenue for a plane to land, Lake Wiley. So don't take that out of your sight. That is a possibility. So just show you the, this is a sound study, but this shows you, obviously if it's the sound, that's the flight paths going straight over Lake Wiley from Rock Hill and Charlotte Douglas Airport. All of that is going directly over Lake Wiley. Here's just the average everyday flight while coming in from Charlotte. So look at all the planes that are going over Lake Wiley. So Charlotte is, depending on what day of the week it is, they're jockeying somewhere between fifth and seventh busiest airport in the world. Rock Hill Airport's getting ready to hopefully have a thousand foot extension to bring in more business. Rock Hill's airport traffic is going to go up. Rock Hill's looking at about 40,000 flights per year, whereas Charlotte's doing 800 a day. So the potential is there. Boater usage, this was obtained using the Senator's Office and North Carolina Wildlife. That's a lot of boats registered in our county, Mecklenburg County, Gaston County, that could all potentially be using our lake as a source of recreation. So just want to, just put a lot of things into numbers to grasp some reasoning in how popular recreation is in our area. So what we want to do is provide a service to our tax district and York County because currently we don't have anything. We don't want to solely rely on all other agencies or Charlotte Fire Department if they're available. They're not always available. So if we were to have an incident, we have to, one, first request them. They're not on automatic mutual aid. They don't just get in the boat and come. They have to be requested. So there's an automatic lag time and from when they're dispatched. So when there is some kind of fire, injury, or anything of that nature in our area, what are we going to tell our citizens and taxpayers when we say someone lost their life or their house burnt down that, I'm sorry, Charlotte Fire Department's fireboat wasn't available? I don't think they're going to be very happy with that when we can provide a service to them and we're willing to do it. So please take that into consideration because it could be any of us, our family members, anything of that nature. I want to leave you with that. So thank you for your time and I want to give it back to Chief Falk.
I want you to have an open mind and look, you've seen all the incidents that can happen on the lake. I hope a fireboat never has to crank. I hope a fire truck never has to crank because when they do, somebody's having a bad day. But over the years, we went from strictly firefighting, now the fire service is doing emergency medical. We run medical calls all day long, all night long. We run wrecks, we run entrapments. We do anything on the ground for emergencies. We don't do anything on the lake. You got Ebenezer Park, you go do an addition there, you're talking about doing something out at Allison Creek Boat Landing, a park. You're bringing the people to the park, to the lake, to enjoy the recreation of the lake and they all bringing boats with them. There's no protection out there for them. There's not a district in this county that somebody don't own a pontoon, a jet ski or a ski boat or even a canoe that don't use Lake Wiley. So this is not just for Newport Fire Department, this is for York County as a whole. And that's what we're trying to stress, is just emergency services on water and land that we're not providing at this time, but yet we do it everywhere else in the county. These people deserve your protection too and they look forward to it. How many calls does the boat go run? I can't answer that. DNR says seven to 12 boat crashes a year. 2018, there were seven. Nothing major, no serious injuries, but in years past, there has been death, serious Went through dispatch, trying to come up with some numbers. I was told it was too many man hours, the way those calls are logged, it was just impossible for them to come up with a true respective number. But me saying that there's several calls a year, they said I would be correct in saying that. I don't want to put no words in anybody's mouth, but there's several calls a year. You buy ladder trucks for the fire service. How many times a ladder truck roll a year? How many times does this squirt water on a fire? Those fireboats go running more times than a ladder truck does in this county. I can promise you that. I've talked to the Buffalo Fire Chief, I've talked to the Tegu Cave Fire Chief, neither one has interest in a boat on Lake Wiley. They said Newport, go for it. We need protection. They're not interested in it. Fort Mill is more interested below the dam. There's going to be a park built, I understand there, that's all swift water in the rocks. That's what they're gearing up for, below the dam. Those people need protection too, just like the ones above the dam. Leslie Fire Department, they're buying Kodiak boats for below the dam where they can do their job because there's nothing on the water for these people and they do deserve protection. The Lake Club Marina, Commodore Yacht Club, Tegu Cave Marina, all are fueling stations for these boats, gas and diesel. So you got a problem there, potential with fire. We can do hazmat, you got a county hazmat truck, may run once a year, three times tops, nothing major, but we're trying to cover all the bases with emergency services in this county and that's all we're trying to do now. Newport has built three substations, we bought fire trucks. We want to continue on and this is an endeavor that we've looked into for several, several years and we feel like this is the time that we need to get going and doing something. Lake Wiley is not getting any bigger, it's getting smaller because it's getting populated. More people's coming out of North Carolina, from all over the country because they come to Ebenezer Park, use the park and they bring their boats. You got information, our tax board vote met again. They went ahead and voted unanimously to go ahead and pursue buying this boat. They think there's a need. That's where we at. It's not just a wish and a whim that, that we're trying to do. It's a need and it's an emergency need. The fire services had to take over all the emergencies, land or water, so we're trying to fulfill that vote. I would just like support on this to be able to move forward. We've come up with a pretty good estimated price from one of the vendors, boat's $365,000. Wow, that's, that's a lot of money. It is. But at the same time, if we can move forward, get things ironed out, work with county management, treasury, make sure everything's go work in our budget, then we'll be ready to move forward and, and get y'all to approve this because it's something that's really needed. That's about all I got to say to dress up what we've talked about. I mean, y'all seen it, it can happen. Who thought last week that there'd be a water line ruptured in Rock Hill? Guess what? Fort Mill, York County, wasn't no water. Never thought that happened, did you? York County was without water. Week before last, Charlotte, fire boats had to come in Lake Wiley, York County side, boat taking on water. It got there about the same time the Sheriff's Department, boat got there, they got the gentleman, he's an elderly gentleman on the boat, got him off the boat, got him to safety and got the boat in. That's just, things has happened. So what you think may not happen, can happen and the ruptured water line is one of them. Thank you for your time. If you've got any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you, Chief. We're going to hold all questions. This is under new business number one, a discussion, and I know you were going to stay for that vote anyway, so we'll ask all the questions then.
But I can't tell you when or how, but I can tell you, there's going to be a bad accident on Lake Wiley and we're not prepared to do it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Under public forum, Ronnie Taylor. Taylor, name and address, please.
Thank you, Ronnie Taylor, 1411 Lincoln Road, York, South Carolina. First thing I want to tell you about is the York County Veterans Day Parade, November the 9th. It's going to start at White Size Cleaners, come up, take a left and go to the York County Veterans Memorial Park. Our guest speaker this year is the first African American lady that graduated from the Naval Academy, Janie Myron. She's a pretty impressive young lady. Next thing I want to tell you about is the Vietnam Veterans Wall. We've been talking about it for six months, some of us is here. It'll be here tomorrow. It'll be set at the York County Veterans Memorial Park at 2 o'clock tomorrow. We're not going to open it up there, but we'll leave the Veterans Memorial Park tomorrow at 2:25, come down Main Street, go down Lincoln Road, pass the new high school, take a ride on a bypass, follow the bypass all the way around to Highway 5, Highway 5, down to 901, take a ride on 901, go around Post 34 and come back and go up Cherry Road to the park. Good many peoples going to be standing out there cheering everybody on, high schools to schools, that's one thing we did, we tried to make it where we could go past all the schools. The memorial will be set up Wednesday, Wednesday morning, be open, it should be open at 2 o'clock Wednesday, but the main group of people is going to start coming in Thursday, school kids are coming Thursday. It's going to be open 24 hours a day, all the way up until 2 o'clock Sunday. I recommend you come, see it. The big deal's going to be Saturday, they're going to do a lot of ceremonies Saturday starting at 10 o'clock. Don Clark usually comes and tells you about that, but he had an emergency, he's in California right now, so I told him, I let you know about it.
Thank you, sir. Mark Kettlewell to talk about the water main break.
Good evening, Mr. Careman and members of council. My name is Mark Kettlewell.
My name is Mark Kettlewell and I serve as the Director of Water and Sewer Utilities for the city of Rock Hill. Appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight. Last Wednesday, October twenty, or fourteenth, the city experienced a major water line break at a water filter plant. And that break caused impact to the county's eastern-western distribution systems. And I wanted to just take time to thank you, thank your staff, thank the customers for their understanding and patience as we work through that, the issues associated with that break. You know, the partnerships we have with the wholesale customers, the support that we got from Charlotte Mecklenburg Utilities, from Chester Metropolitan District, went a long way in trying to help our customers while we address those, that water line, those water line issues. I appreciate your assistance in getting information out to the customers. I think all the customers really appreciated the timely responses and answers to their specific questions, so staff did a good job of doing that. You know, we understand it was a major and extreme inconvenience to the county and to everybody that was served by the city's water filter plant. And I want to ensure you that we're doing everything we can so it doesn't happen again. So we're working on that. You know, again, I'd just like to thank you for your understanding, your patience, your help, and the partnership we share with York County. We thank you very much. And I guess with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Under consent agenda, are there any items that anyone wishes?
Just to remove. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter thirty-one, entitled County Policies, Section thirty-one point zero one, Rates, Fees, and Charges for Zoning Appeals, Applications for Variances, Rezoning Requests, Permits, Inspections, Plan Reviews, and Other Applications, Procedures, and Services rendered by the York County Planning and Development Department and the York County Engineering Department, Subsection A, in order to amend and add application fees for the Improvement Guarantee Funds for Local Roadway Sections with curb and gutter, for local roadway sections with ditch, and for local roadway sections for light commercial-industrial roadways, to otherwise reformat Section thirty-one point zero one A to hold a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor? Motion to close?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There is a third reading on this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Old business. Council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifty-five zoning code, so as to provide for solar energy facilities, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses, and provide for the districts in which they are allowed, to establish solar energy facilities as special exceptions in AGC and AGC one, to amend the supplemental regulations, subchapter, in order to address items such as setbacks, height, buffer yards in screening, lighting, glare, environmental impacts, aviation impacts, site restoration, facility abandonment, and decommission, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
I'd just like to say thank you to staff. I know after the last meeting, we asked that you meet with some of the farmers and agriculture community to address their concerns, and I know you did, and you were able to address most of those and work out some things with them, so thank you for that.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
I'm opposed.
Oh, one, one no.
One no.
Counsel to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifty-four subdivision code, and Chapter one fifty-five zoning code, so as to distinctly define major subdivisions and minor subdivisions, to amend regulatory provisions related thereto, to establish exemptions and exemption standards from such regulatory provisions, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? I will say this, I am, there's been a great bit of debate on this, and I know that the small builder community has had, and has raised numerous concerns about this. We, and I have spoken with numerous members on council, so I can say this is almost a universal request. We need a drop in, an afternoon, some type of time period where small builders have the opportunity to come in, meet with staff, set this out far enough in advance so no one's caught unaware of it, advertise it, make sure that the stakeholders understand it, they can show up, and they can give feedback to this ordinance, and we would ask that that be done prior to third reading. Anyone have any other issues? Yes, sir.
And because you mentioned that to me earlier today, I think that's more than fair, and that'll provide the fair shakeout of any concern, so because of that, I'm not opposing this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
I'll kind of echo Mr. Blackwell's thoughts there. I have concerns about it, I've had a lot of the small builders reach out to me, but with the understanding that before third reading, they will be met with staff and get some of those looked at, just like we do with the solar. I'll support this on second reading, but I need to see those things addressed before third.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. New business. Counsel to hold a discussion and consider the proposed fireboat for Newport Fire Department. So it looks like we're going to discuss it first and then hold any boats that are necessary. Anyone have any comments? Dr. Blackwell, this was in your committee, I may let you just lead the conversation in the beginning.
I'm not reaching for my cell phone anymore. But it came before our committee with Honorable Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Winkler, Honorable Mr. Winkler too. And I was approached about this the first of the year, and I don't live on the lake, I hadn't really thought about it. But when I saw the presentation, it was pretty hard to deny. Because a lot of people live on the lake, there are a lot of accidents, I jet ski on the lake, a lot of people use that lake, some high-end homes there. And after hearing the presentation, all my concerns that may have been considered negatives about ability to reach the house up on the hill, which, you know, you have an automatic pumping tanker, pumper station, right there with endless water supply. And it's just obvious to me, after hearing all the concerns that exist on the lake, that if we're going to protect the most isolated far corner of western York County, and have a half million dollar fire truck sitting there that I see when I'm hunting for deer, and it's just me and the deer looking at the fire truck. I certainly think with the heavy population around Lake Wiley, all the accidents that occur there, needs to be addressed. This was first talked about twelve years ago. At that time, they came up, and then there was a little bit of political debates about, well, we wanted half the time at Bethel. Newport said, we wanted half the time, and then the end state guys just decided, we're done with this, we're not going to get in the middle of this discussion. But it's continued on, and it's a lot more populated lake now, a lot more than twelve years ago. So part of our job is to protect the citizens of York County, and after looking at all the facts presented, I couldn't really decide on a legitimate reason not to support it. So because of that reason, I'm going to support the need that we have there to protect our citizens. And I wouldn't like to just add one thing, I want to thank the Newport Fire Department for taking the initiative to meet a need that nobody else really wants to fool with. And it's, and even to the point of your tax board taking on the financial responsibility. I think that should be admired, and I appreciate your dedication.
I think, I think Dr. Blackwell just addressed one of my questions I had wrote down. Where would the funding come from to purchase the boat? Is Newport tax?
Newport's going to cover it.
Okay. And my next, is forced to training go with people who are going to man the boat to make sure they're certainly qualified to operate and do those lifesaving tactics, you know, is forced to training. Is Newport willing to cover, how is that going to be deviated amongst the fire departments across the county who will be operating this boat? Have you guys looked at, have they looked at some form of expense sharing to do that? Well, and it's always good, you know, we all live in our different pockets of the communities, and we think about things that just surround how we live. I echo some of the words that Dr. Blackwell mentioned, that good, someone thought about this part of life safety when it comes to, on the lake, whether it's putting out a fire or rescuing someone in a boating accident. I think it's very commendable that we have good stewards who look at different aspects that we're not currently covering. So I didn't see anything in the presentation that would keep me from supporting it, and it's probably something that I probably don't even think about once a year. You know, we all remember the image of the plane in the water, I think it was up in New York somewhere, that could easily happen here in York County. So we hope it doesn't happen, but we keep car insurance, we keep house insurance, we assure a lot, insure a lot of things that, and insurance is for when, you know, something bad goes wrong. This boat is for when we have those critical needs and somebody's in the need of help or something's bad. And since it's all been kind of hashed out, where the funding's going to come from, a lot of details have gone into it, a lot of research has gone into it, I would support it as well.
Can I just add one thing to Mr. Roddy's? Then one, you made me think of it when you were making your points, but they're there for the whole lake. I mean, they will go, it's not, we just do Newport. I mean, Bethel needs them, Thunderbird, whatever, they're there to provide the help that's needed. And it would be nice if all the lake volunteer, how many it is, would all join together, but I understand they have their issues, and they have their priorities, and Newport's willing to take it on, so I commend them for it.
Chief Falk, Kel, I appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this. I put together an email of all the questions I have, because if you're going to ask me to vote for something, I'm going to analyze it in a certain way, forgive me, that's what I do for a living. But I sent probably twenty-five questions to these folks, and they sent me a response late last night, and I had a brief due this morning, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. But in those conversations, what I understood from Carl, that they were looking for is, there were still some questions that were unanswered, there were still some things that needed to be hashed out with county management, and what they were looking for was kind of some approval to move forward and take the next step of gathering more information. That's what I understood they were looking for. I did also send a list of my questions to county management, and I'd like to know what management's position is on the need and the proposal.
Sorry, I can't see very well, but I would say our concerns are similar to yours. We want to justify the need and understand how the boat would be used, how many calls we may expect to answer or have on the lake, both from a fire perspective and from a rescue perspective. I think right now, we just don't have data on that, and the reason is because we don't, we don't file those requests for service based on they're in the lake, they get addressed to the nearest shore, nearest address that is on the shore. So it would take a lot of manual work to sort through how many calls we've had, and what the nature of those calls are. We could do some more work on that, but I don't have a good handle on how many calls we may respond to, or the nature of those calls. So I'd like some additional time to do that, also like some additional time to understand Newport's plan for funding the boat, and how that relates to what implication it has on their capital budget, what it may have on their operational budget. I think they've gotten indication that they can borrow the money to do this. My concern is, three or four years from now, if they have another capital need, that they no longer have the capacity to borrow money for. So I'd like to talk to them more about that, exactly the operational budget, how that would impact their budget overall, again, if they're making a payment each year on a fireboat, does that mean they are compromising some of their ability to hire staff or do training that's necessary for the boat? Also like to know how they're going to run the boat and staff the boat, and train people for the boat. I don't know if that's something they plan to have additional personnel on the boat all the time, or are they going to use personnel that's currently assigned to stations? I don't have answers to all those questions yet, so I'd like an opportunity to meet more with Chief Falk and get answers to all those questions, in addition to nailing down what the specifications are going to be for the boat, how much it's going to cost, what all it's going to have, what all capabilities will it have, and then proceed from there.
I think, first of all, I think it's lawful for one tax district that only serves twenty-five percent of the shoreline to decide that they think it's that important to take up the cause. And I guess my only question is, every dollar that we tax our citizens, we need to make sure that it's justified, and I certainly don't have a problem with moving forward with figuring out how to address that, and for folks to gather more information, which is what I understood Chief Falk to want to do, but I think we need to get answers to those questions.
I'll say, I had, you know, a lot of concerns and questions before the meeting, public safety meeting, and a lot of them were addressed then. I do feel like it's a, you know, it's a part of the county that we do not serve. We answer motor vehicle accidents, we serve those, but we don't necessarily, we don't have a way to really serve the boater accidents on the lake, and that lake's part of the county as well. You know, I had questions about some of the homes that are way back off and whether or not you could get to them. I did not realize the boat could be used as a pumper and to make the lake an unlimited fire hydrant. That, to me, is a good idea, because that can leave a lot of our tankers not having to do mutual aid and still be available for other calls, because unfortunately, we don't just have one call in the county at a time sometimes. And after the public safety meeting, I went and met, I have clients who live on the lake, and I went and met with one, just so happened since that meeting and today, one day last week. And they live in an older home, in the older part, and driving to their house, there were some narrower roads and driveways that I was looking, and I was like, there's no way one of our large engines would get to this person's house. You know, what you were showing was the large fancy new homes, but there's some older homes on that lake that are in some really narrow roadways and driveways and stuff that, you know, there was one I looked at, it was not the home I was going to do, but one of the neighbors, I wasn't real sure my little Audi would get to it, because of some of the ruts and different things and how narrow it was. And so in thinking about that, I'm not sure how y'all would fight that, other than laying a whole lot of hoes from way up somewhere else. So I see a reason for this and a purpose for this, and I do thank again Newport for stepping up and being willing to do that. So I will support moving forward on it.
As someone who has spent a lot of time on the lake, I certainly understand the need and the increased demand for the services for the boat, and also the, like Robert said, the number of properties on the lake that are just inaccessible to our other apparatus. I also have a lot of questions, though, regarding its use, it's how it overlaps with the Charlotte boat and its service area, as well as response times to different areas of the lake from its location, and how those compare to the Charlotte boat. I also have some questions about the financing of it. You know, in this letter, it indicates that it'll be financed by debt, I'd like to know what percentage of it is financed by debt, how it impacts the budget. There's still a lot of questions that I think that need to be answered. I'm supportive of continuing to move forward with the conversation, with the understanding that we get a little bit deeper in terms of training, as was mentioned, financing, coverage area, and how it compares, and where the deficiencies are currently from the service that we get from the Charlotte boat.
So I think that there is a question in my mind as to whether or not a fireboat is needed, and it concerns me that we had a fire study done, and there was no mention of a fireboat in that fire study. I also have questions as far as the logistics. If a fire-
If a fireboat is warranted for the, overall, the Bethel Fire Tax District, Bethel Fire Department has over 50% of the total parcels with a structure on the lake, and they also have over 56% of the market value, when you talk about value of homes, which I don't, I mean, you know, my home is not valued at a lot, but it's just as important as me, to me, as someone who's living in a multimillion dollar home, so I don't think that's a judge of value or how important it is to save, whether or not to save something, but I just want to make the point that logistics-wise, where really should this boat be kept? I would like to see a copy of the MOU with Charlotte Fireboat 38, just to see exactly, one of the questions was when they are not on the lake, which I think is very rare, and also Gaston County for the, for that more northern side of the lake, I'd be interested in knowing a little bit more about what area they cover, and I hate to see a tax increase for 569 taxpayers on the lake, they are, there are 569 taxpayers, parcels that have a building on the lake in the Newport Fire District. Again, that is less than half of what the people that are on the shorelines of the Bethel Fire Tax District, and so I hate to see a tax, I hate to see a tax burden for those people, and I'm also questioning the personnel to man a fireboat, so what happens when you have a fireboat? These are just, these are questions for you, Carl, and these are questions for the county that I would just, I would have to have answered before I could support it. But if you're on the lake and you have a fire on the lake, you're going to be calling Bethel for mutual aid, so I'm just wondering how all that, how all that actually looks on paper with just the logistics. And the one number that I really, that I don't have at all is how many scenes, I think, you know, David Hudson mentioned this, but how many scenes would we actually have used that fireboat? Too, I know the sheriff's boat, it has very little mileage on it, it's used very rarely, so it concerns me that we would add a fireboat and not even be using the sheriff's department, sheriff's office boat that often. And my question would also be for Tika K., they had a boat, they had the personnel to man that boat, why would they not want to replace that boat? And they actually didn't have a pontoon, as it was, as someone said, but they actually had a very nice boat and some issues with that boat, but why would they not be, you know, wanting to replace that boat? What happened with their history that would cause them to not request another boat? So I just have a lot of unanswered questions, I'm not a no, but I'm not a yes, I'm just, I just have a lot of unanswered questions.
I haven't heard anyone tell that this isn't going to happen, I've heard everybody say they'd really like to study this more, and as part of the study, one of the things, I'm, I was looking at the map and the 9,000 square foot house, three quarters of a mile from a fire hydrant, what happens to the 4,000 square foot house that's three quarters of a mile that isn't beside the lake? Does that house burn down because we just don't have adequate fire hydrants in our county? And I think that's part of our, part of the overall study, when we talk about studying fire, we're trying to figure out how many houses can we save? How can we do the most amount of protection and safety? And perhaps a fireboat is the way to do it. I live on the lake, trust me, I'd love you to come up and put out a fire if it started in my backyard, but I think we, I think it's, to me, it's part of a larger discussion of if we're going to use taxpayer dollars, and at this point, it's Newport's dollars, not everybody's, but if we're going to talk about doing that, how do we utilize it to the best to protect everybody? Is every, are we protecting the maximum amount of houses in Newport by spending this kind of money? Or are, and on the lake in general, or are we neglecting certain people in Newport who don't maybe get that same fire protection or in other areas where you're doing mutual aid to? I don't know the answers, I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'd like someone who studies this and who kind of talks about this, and obviously, Mr. Hudson, to come up with that answer and give us a recommendation so that we can make a decision for you, one way or the other, so. Let me, Dr. Blackwell?
Just to add to that, I hear the will of the council, that's fine with me to work with administration to provide them the answers they need. I would like to put a timeline on that, because I don't want it to be buried in the government bureaucracy that I kind of see might happen, so I just ask in a motion that we provide the staff, administration, the answers they need, and we come back within two months and decide, but some of these questions I've not heard before about the house way down in the corner of the county, or, and I appreciate some of these questions, but I've never heard these questions before, so it's interesting, but I don't want to see any citizen unprotected, and like I said earlier, if we can, in the furthest corner of our county, have a half million dollar truck sitting out there and collecting dust, I can see the benefit of a fireboat with everything that goes on the lake every day of the week and all the homes there, the logic of this, so I would just ask that with the motion, that we, Carl and Newport, provide all the answers needed to the administration, and they get back with us within two months, either thumbs up or thumbs down.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second discussion, Mr. Winkler.
Quickly, I'll say, I agree with that, because there are still some questions I have, and jokingly, I want to say, Mr. Blackwell, if you see that truck from where you're hunting, you're probably hunting a little too close to the road, because it's inside a fire station down there in Bullock Creek.
I was walking from one stand to the next, but I appreciate the clarification.
But I do, I appreciate the questions and the concerns with that, but, you know, we do buy trucks in parts of the county that we have the responsibility to cover and that don't respond to a lot of calls, and I believe we have a responsibility to the people, our citizens who are on the lake as well, so I support moving forward and hopefully getting answers to all these questions.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. That's two months, so that would be the second meeting in December, last meeting in December. Council to approve first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project NMF with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion, again, six, one. Council to adopt a resolution authorizing the termination effective December 31, 2018, of those certain fee in lieu of ad valorem tax agreements entered to, on October 5, 1998, and April 17, 2006, between York County, South Carolina, and Bow Water Incorporated, including its successors and assigns, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents, including bills of sale and quitclaim deeds from the county to Bow Water Incorporated successors and assigns, to reconvey all of the county's right, title, and interests to and any and all real or personal property formerly governed by those certain fee in lieu of ad valorem tax arrangements and other matters related thereto. So moved. Second. I believe that Mr. Roddy wanted to say that he has a conflict and is accusing himself. Any discussion other than that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Council to adopt an inducement resolution committing York County to enter into a fee agreement with a company identified under the codename Project Origami and other matters related thereto. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Council to provide first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county at this time as Project Origami with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Mr. Roddy, can we turn at any moment? Council and other committee reports, Finance and Operations Committee, Chairwoman Krista Cox.
The Finance and Operations Committee met today at 5:30 and had consideration of applications for service for several boards. The committee recommended approval of Tamara Osborne for the York County Library Board for District Five, Kate Kraxberger for District One Planning Commission, first term, Annie Williams for District Five, second term, Board of Assessment Appeals, Joseph Coggins for the Leslie Fire Tax Board, Barbara O'Connell for a first term on the Stormwater Appeals Board, and John Comans for a first term, and Patricia Mickel for a second term for the Veterans Memorial Park Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Are there any council member, new non-agenda comments? Mr. Winkler?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to county management and engineering, I see Lisa's stepped out already, I believe, but we did get sprinklers installed in our new veterans park just in time for the end of the drought, so I do appreciate that, though, because the rain won't continue to come, but we've got a beautiful park there, and so we need to have those sprinklers and all put there, I appreciate that getting done.
Anyone else? Mr. Roddy?
I have a quick question, and that was comment slash question for staff, I got a call. Last week concerning Mountain Holly School, it sits in a curve, it's in the county, and it's a Rock Hill School District school, and the parent was concerned about getting some signs posted, they didn't know which avenue to go to, whether that would be on us, would that be going through the schools to get some school ahead warning, some type of warning signs in the curve or somewhere around the school?
It's not happening.
I have no idea. The gentleman said it's been several wrecks because the speed limit.
On Porter? On Porter?
Yeah, yeah, I got a call, and they didn't know if that would be on York County to work with, putting the signs up, SC DOT, or go through the school district to get some signs up, so I just want to kind of put that up, said, been several wrecks and all on the road.
I've had something similar in my district with the school district. If that is a state road, I can tell you SC DOT has to do it, and then they have to have approval from the school district to do it. It's kind of a double step thing, I've had to dance that dance. You, but Dean will help you if you simply let Dean know, but I've had that exact thing come up in the last three months in my district. Any other new, new council member, new non-agenda comments? Are there any citizen concerns?
I've got a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, one last one.
I'm going to have to move down this way further or something.
Just wave your hands.
Just want to wish our sheriff, Kevin Tolson, a happy 50th birthday yesterday, officially 5-0.
I'm sure he appreciates that one.
Yep.
Coming his age.
I thought there was more coming.
No, that's it.
Any citizen concerns? None. There are motions, go into executive session.
Yes, sir, maybe we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice on condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-004, Track 114. Receipt of legal advice on condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-009, Tracks 25, 28, excuse me, Tracks 26, 28, and 29. Receipt of legal advice condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-010, Tracks 24. Contractual matter and receipt of legal advice on Blue Granite franchise agreement, and contractual matter and receipt of legal advice on Project Avalanche.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session, we'll go in immediately.
Motion to condemn Pennies Project 11149-009, Tracks 26, 28, and 29.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Any other motions?
Yes, motion to condemn Pennies Project 11149-010, Track 24.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, any other motions?
Yes, one more. Motion to direct management to inquire as to the status of Blue Granite's connection to Charlotte Mecklenburg Water System.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I can't make the motion, does somebody have the motion?
I'll adjourn.
We are adjourned.